People on the.
Is Kurt ready?
We will get started in about one minute.
You good, Kurt?
Yes.
We will, we will go ahead and get started. I'm going to start the meeting out by turning things over to Porter to give us some information about the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Porter Arneal, and as Mayor Ananda said, I will be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting. With me here is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. She will work alongside Mayor Ananda to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on City's YouTube channel and public access cable channel 25. Currently, I have everyone muted, most people muted, so we can talk through the general ground rules for tonight's meeting. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found in the lower-left hand of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. You'll just have to remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. Each time you speak, please remember to state your name and title for the benefit of anybody who might be listening by phone. In the menu, you can also turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on during the meeting. If you're participating by phone, you can click star six to unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will also see a choice to toggle between speaker and gallery view. Speaker view shows the active speaker. Gallery view tiles all of the meeting participants like the Brady Bunch. And now I'll turn the meeting back to Mayor Ananda.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 Lawrence City Commission meeting. I'm going to go ahead and take roll call. Vice Mayor Finkelbach?
President.
Commissioner Shipley, here. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
All right. Before we jump into approving the agenda, I would invite Sheri to give us some information about the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk, and I'm just going to provide just a few reminders for the meeting tonight to ensure that the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act are met. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, the mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Mayor, you will then need to announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. Various members of city staff are present via Zoom, and they also need to remember to state their name and title each time they speak. Members of the public are allowed to speak to certain agenda items. These items are specifically noted on the meeting agenda. Individuals who signed up in advance to provide public comment remotely will be called upon by name. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking, and the regular three-minute time limit will apply. The mayor will then call for in-person public comment for those without access to technology options, and staff present will direct you to, you to the podium to speak following social distancing and safety protocols. Again, the regular three-minute time limit will apply. Again, I just want to remind everyone to please mute yourself when you are not speaking.
Thank you, Sheri. So we will go ahead and move into our agenda this evening. This is Mayor Ananda. We're going to work very hard to be very good at introducing ourselves before we speak. The first item on our agenda, A, is approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any items that members of the commission would like to see moved, amended?
This is Stuart Bulley, City Commission. Move approval of the agenda.
Lisa Larson, City Commission, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, this is Mayor Ananda. We have a motion by Commissioner Bulley, a second by Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkelbach?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. Passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is recognitions and proclamations and presentations. Again, while we always want to recognize exceptional work in our community during the coronavirus pandemic with our commitment to public safety and for compliance with the Kansas Governor's order, individuals or groups will not be allowed to attend the commission meetings to make remarks or receive their. Instead, we will be promoting those proclamations on social media. So please note this week, we are proclaiming the week of April 18th to 25th, 2020, to be Earth Week. I know that there are a lot of online encourage folks to find them. So with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Please note that all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Only those items noted with yellow highlight, bold print, and italics print are eligible for live public comment, and the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. There were no items that were polled prior to this by members of the public. Are there any items that members of the commission would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor, Courtney Shipley, Commissioner, C7E and C5F.
Okay. Mayor Ananda, are there any other items that commissioners would like to pull? If not, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Porter or Sheri, do we need to ask if there's any member of the public present, this is Mayor Ananda, who would like to pull an item from the?
No, no, there isn't. We don't have any members of the public present, and none of those items were highlighted, so they were not eligible to be pulled anyway.
Thank you. Okay. So do we have a motion then?
Commissioner Larson, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of C7E and C5F.
Stuart Bulley, City Commission, second.
Motion by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkelbach?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, that passes unanimously. So we will move on, this is Mayor Ananda, we will move on to item C5F. The item is consider adopting ordinance 9738 on second and final reading, establishing NRA at 800 Pennsylvania Street. Commissioner Shipley?
I just wanted to be consistent in my voting by voting nay to it. I'm not going to beloviate about it. I've said more or less everything I need to say.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? This is Mayor Ananda.
Commissioner Larson, I had a question. I thought it was C7E that we pulled.
C?
Oh, it's CF5. Okay, I see that there now. Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. Other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion on item, this is Mayor Ananda, C5F?
This is Vice Mayor Finkelbach. I would move for adoption of ordinance number 9738 on second and final reading, establishing a neighborhood revitalization area at 800 Pennsylvania Street, and authorize the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement between the city, the county, and the school district on NARA, NRA administration, and authorize the city manager to execute a performance agreement between the city and the applicant.
Commissioner Larson, I second that.
We have a motion, this is Mayor Ananda, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkelbach, second by Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkelbach?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Nay.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That was a four-to-one vote with Commissioner Shipley voting against. Is that sufficient, Sheri?
Yes.
Okay. Item C7E, consider revising the 2020-24 CIP to move $159,873.37 from parking garage repairs to Harvard and Waukerusa intersection improvement. Commissioner Shipley?
This is Commissioner Shipley, speaking. I know Dave Cronin is here, or he was. Oh, no, he moved. This just looked like a lot, and I appreciate how mainly clear the staff memo is. It just seemed like a lot of robbing Peter to pay Paul, and I just wanted maybe a little discussion about that and, and maybe to hear if other commissioners, maybe Commissioner Bulley, for example, had any feelings about the way the money was moved around in this situation.
This is Dave Cronin, City Engineer. I could kind of briefly summarize what we're doing with the shifting of funds. So the project closed out here recently, and with the change orders that are owed to KDOT, they were, the total project cost was, was within the original project budget. However, due to the way we're now budgeting and allocating funds in the CIP, the, the costs for the change order weren't accounted for in 2020. So what we're doing is basically shifting some funding from the parking garage repair fund, where there are sufficient funds that we can essentially borrow the funds from there, pay this change order cost to KDOT, and then when we receive our annual federal fund exchange dollars later in the year, we would reimburse that account. And so I would also add that it, we traditionally receive around $900,000 in those federal funds every year, and this year we're getting about 1.6 million. So there's going to be some extra funding available even after we pay these change orders. But you are correct, we are doing a little bit of, a little bit of a shift. So hopefully that summarizes what we're doing. If you have any other specific questions, I'm here to answer them.
Commissioner Bulley, David, I would just want to confirm that the project came in within budget or under budget?
This is Dave Cronin, City Engineer. Yes, it did come in under budget.
Commissioner Shipley, sorry, I'm trying to get to the right item here. Whenever I click on it, it goes back. So I want to clarify, you had the money budgeted. Some of that money, however, you moved to another project, right? And then you still needed that money later. That was kind of where I thought it was unclear. I mean, I see what you've done, but I'm, I'm wondering if like, that's really best practices. If I did that with my own finances as a business, that would kind of not bode particularly well. Does anybody have any other feelings about that?
I don't know if Jeremy's on the phone call, and I'm obviously late into this, but I do think that we made, Dave mentioned it, we did make a, I'm sorry, this is Craig Owen, City Manager. We made, I think we made a change in the way we accounted for projects from one year to the next, which meant that we are keeping it within one fiscal year. And so this was the, this was one of those transition effects. Is that true, Dave, or am I mixing that up with something else?
This is Dave Cronin, City Engineer. That is correct.
So we're now, Craig Owen, City Manager, we're now accounting for it the same way, but in changing the way that we accounted for things across the board. This was one of the effects that would happen. So we were counting things in one fiscal year when we should have been counting them another. But we'll be doing it the exact same way every year, every project going forward. We just had to make that, that change in the way we accounted for things. And I do think that's best practice, and I think that's something that Jeremy brought in when, when he arrived as well.
This is Stuart Bulley, City Commission. I appreciate the conversation, and I appreciate Commissioner Shipley's interest in this. I am confident that this is being handled appropriately, and I will support the, the motion when it comes.
Mayor, Commissioner Courtney Shipley, thank you, everyone, for your responses. I appreciate it.
This is Mayor Ananda. At this point, if there are no further questions, do we have a motion? Or Commissioner Shipley, do you have more questions that you would like to ask?
No, Mayor Courtney Shipley, sorry.
This is Commissioner Larson, and I move to revise the 2020-24 CIP to move $159,873.37 from the parking garage repairs to Harvard and Waukerusa intersection improvement. Authorize the issuance of a check to the Kansas Department of Transportation in the amount of $159,873.37.
This is Vice Mayor Finkelbach. I second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Larson. This is Mayor Ananda, a second by Vice Mayor Finkelbach. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkelbach?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. We will now move on to public comment. General public comment will be accepted in written form only. General public comments must be submitted 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting. Emails or mail are acceptable, and written comments can also be dropped in the utility billing drop box located at the cutout Sixth Street in New Hampshire. All comments should be marked for City Commission. So we are not taking in public general public comment. We have received one communication from Chris Flowers in regard to our meeting process as well as the CIP process, and that was the public comment that we received. Because we are not reading those aloud or having public comment in person, we can move on to our regular agenda items. Our first item is considering, consider the following items related to the QuickTrip redevelopment project at Ninth and Iowa Street, and there are three items under that. Will we be presenting on all of these and then taking three separate votes?
Correct. This is Chris Rice, the project engineer with MSO. So I'll be presenting the, the first two items, and then Becky Pepper and the planning office will present the third, and then there will be individual actions and votes on each of the three items.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and proceed?
Yeah. As I said, my name is Chris Rice. I'm a project engineer with MSO. And what we're looking at here is a proposed redevelopment of the southeast corner of Ninth and Iowa Streets. QuickTrip has proposed the construction of a new gas station and convenience store. Previously, there were two gas stations there, a car wash and the scooters' drive-thru. And I'd like to pull up the site plan if I can. See if I can share my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is Chris Rice. So on the, what they're proposing here on the north end would be the, the gas pumps in the center of the site would be the convenience store itself, and on the south would be parking with the Scooters coffee shop remaining in its current location. And our purpose for being here tonight is twofold. The first is to vacate certain right-of-way and easement that are currently attributed to the property or adjacent to the property, and vacation of those would allow the project to be completed as envisioned by the applicant. And then the second would be to accept new right-of-way and easements. That's an action that's typically done on the consent agenda, but we've sequenced it on the regular agenda so that we can proceed through the vacations, and then if appropriate, continue with the minor subdivision. And that's something that Becky Pepper will walk us through. Let's see. So here's, the site plan here is a result of a couple of months of work between city staff and the developer, QuickTrip. Really, some of our main goals here were to reduce access points and potential conflicts on arterial roadways, of which Iowa and Ninth Street are both arterial roadways, improve the intersection of Ninth and Iowa Street, and provide a layout that limits pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. So the vacation request before you this evening is principally for the elimination of right-of-way for and the road itself. That would be kind of a spur road that exists south of the Ninth and Iowa intersection. I'm going to switch to an aerial here that maybe shows us your. So this is the, the first vacation request for this road that connects Iowa Street, northbound Iowa to eastbound Ninth Street. It functions as a right-turn lane in some instances because there's not currently a right-turn lane here. So the proposed, the proposed site plan shows the addition of a right-turn lane that would replace the function of the spur road, which is to be vacated by this action. We go from having five access points on Iowa Street to a single full access off the south of the site, which is supported by a right-turn lane into there. And here, there was about 100 feet of access right here at the intersection. That's been moved to a right-turn-in-only access, and then this full access back here remains. So let's see. The developer has prepared public improvement plans that encompass the right-turn lane, the addition of sidewalk along the perimeter of the site, and the relocation and replacement of a signal pole here at this corner. In addition, supporting those public improvement plans is a letter of assurance in the form of an escrow agreement and a signed bid by a contractor. And those are two items that are required by the Development Code, and they facilitate, they put the city in the position of ensuring that funds are provided for this work to be completed, and then we play a role in the dispersment of those funds so we can ensure that the work is completed to our specifications. So those plans have been reviewed by city staff and approved pending this vacation accent, this vacation action. I'm going to switch to an exhibit here that was in the, within the packet. So what you see here in red is what is to be vacated tonight. So this spur road would be vacated as well as, and this is what would be the second vote, would be vacating this, what is now an alley easement. The city doesn't have plans to install an alley here. It currently is not an alley and is more a utility easement. And so as part of this, we're looking to vacate the alley easement and instead dedicate a utility easement, as well as dedicate a utility easement for the portion of right-of-way where utilities are currently located. As part of the vacation application, city staff reached out to utility companies within the city and within our own city utilities to solicit comment for this vacation. We received no comments in opposition to the vacation, and all of the facilities that are currently within right-of-way or easement will continue to be so pending the acceptance of those easements as part of the minor subdivision. So with that, I will stand for questions. Dave Cronin, the city engineer, is also here, as well as Becky Pepper, who is the planner on the project, and Eric Eckhart, who is the QuickTrip project manager.
Commissioner Larson, here, I have a question for Chris. The area that we're vacating, the street part of it, do they pay us to purchase that property?
This is Chris Rice with the City of Lawrence, a project engineer. They would not pay us for that. Typically, the vacation is divided in half and split to the neighboring property owners, and so QuickTrip being the property owner on either side, that is how that vacation would be, would work in this instance. would be, would work in this instance. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Courtney Shipley, just in that same vein, Commissioner Larson, I remember from time past that when, then when that person, those two people get those sides of the vacation, that also gets added to their taxes. So maybe we're not being paid for the property, but in theory, whatever the square footage is, is added to their taxes. Is that correct?
I'm seeing, this is Chris Rice. I'm seeing Randy Larkin nodding and I would defer to him.
Yes, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. We own an easement for that property and so when we vacate the easement for the right-of-way, then it refers back to the properties that belong there and then they will pay the taxes on that going forward. That property belongs to those properties already. We just had the right-of-way easement for the street and once we vacate the street right-of-way, then it reverts to the previous owners.
This is Stuart Bulley, City Commissioner. Who's going to be paying for the right turn lane on Iowa?
This is Chris Rice, a project engineer at the city. The developer, in this instance, QuickTrip, would be paying for those public improvements. And so that's what that signed bid and letter of escrow is for. I think the total comes to something like $323,000.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldeich. Is that the, the exit that used to be the alley? Is that being widened to make it three lanes, including an entrance lane? Not the alley, the, you know, the, the street we're vacating as it heads out of Ninth. Is that being widened?
Correct. This is Chris Rice, a project engineer. It is being widened. Let me see if I have an exhibit that has them both. It is being, correct, widened to allow for more stacking and access within that area.
Thank you.
Mayor Courtney Shipley, so I'm sorry, your graphic is down. I didn't realize that. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. So right now, it's one way. You can only go east out of there and you're saying now it would be accessible both ways?
That's correct. And I can share my screen again and show this sort of superimposes the two. So what you're seeing here in the darker color is the existing street and then this is the widened area here in this lighter gray. Within the public improvement plans, we have them striping, performing additional striping back here that would facilitate the left turn from Ninth Street onto the property.
Are there any other questions for, from the commission? Will we be moving on to our next presenter then?
We, this is Chris Rice. We could either have Becky Pepper introduce the minor subdivision or we could proceed with the vacations and move to her, whichever you'd prefer.
This is Mayor Nanda. It may be simpler to go ahead and do all of the presentations and then take each one separately. We have two public hearings and then if there are further questions as we move through those, we can ask them. Are there any commissioners who, who would prefer to proceed differently?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Becky Pepper. I'm a planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. My portion will actually be pretty quick because Chris Rice did a great job of summarizing the project. This third item is for your acceptance of easements and right-of-way that are shown on the minor sub drawing that's included in your packet. These include the dedication of right-of-way along a portion of Iowa Street and a portion of Ninth Street that accommodate the construction of that right-hand turn lane as well as dedications of new easements that would replace the areas of vacation, of the right-of-way vacation. So new easements along that street cut through and new easements along the east property line where the alley right-of-way is being vacated. And as Chris stated, the City Commission acceptance of easements and right-of-way is typically an item that's placed on the consent agenda item. However, we wanted it placed here with these other two items on the regular agenda tonight since they're related and since they, the acceptance of easements is, and right-of-way is contingent upon your consideration of the vacation of, of right-of-way. So really, that's all I have for you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions for Becky or Chris from Commissioners? So we have two separate public hearings here. We need to do those separately, Sheri?
That's correct.
Okay. So do we have a motion then to open the public hearing on item one, consider conducting a public hearing for vacation requests submitted by McLauren Engineering Company for QuickTrip Corporation and approve an order for vacation to vacate right-of-way adjacent to the northern property line of 910 Iowa Street?
Commissioner Larson here, I move to open the public hearing.
Commissioner Bulley, second.
We have, this is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion by Commissioner Larson, a second by Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open. We've received no public comment submitted prior to, or requests prior to this meeting. Porter, are there any individuals present to give public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a?
Mr. Bulley, move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Larson, aye. I mean, Commissioner Larson, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bulley, a second by Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. So we are now ready for a motion on this item.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldeich. I'll just add before I move on this, obviously, we're not approving the site plan, but I do want to thank the city and the applicant for working together on this site plan. I know the neighborhood I live in, Hillcrest, was very concerned when this first came out, thinking it might cause more cut-through traffic on Harvard or something, but the addition of that turn lane, I think is going to be an excellent move. Obviously, removing a lot of the driveways is a big deal and even that left turn lane we just talked about. Currently now, if I want to go to Scooters, I have to, you know, go almost, almost to the intersection and try to cut across quickly. To have that a little followback would be much safer. So I certainly appreciate all the work that went into this and I think it's going to be much, much better intersection now that it's over. So saying all that, I would move to approve the order of vacation to vacate the right-of-way adjacent to the northern property line of 910 Iowa Street and authorize the mayor to execute the order of vacation.
Commissioner Bulley, second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Finkeldeich, a second by Commissioner Bulley. Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. So we have our second public hearing on item B, consider conducting a public hearing for a vacation request submitted by McLauren Engineering Company for QuickTrip Corporation and approve an order for vacation to vacate the alley easement adjacent to the eastern property of 910 Iowa Street. Do we have a motion, open the public hearing?
Mr. Bulley, move.
Open the public hearing.
Commissioner Bulley, second.
Okay. This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion by Commissioner Larson, a second by Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. We received no requests for public comment on this item. Are the, Porter, again, I will ask, is there any member of the public here to speak on that item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, do we have?
Mr. Bulley, move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Motion by Commissioner Bulley, second by Commissioner Larson. This is Mayor Nanda. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. And then our third item, consider accepting dedications of easements and right-of-way.
Mayor, excuse me?
Yes.
Commissioner Bulley here. I move that we approve the order of vacation to vacate the alley easement adjacent to the eastern property line of 910 Iowa Street and authorize the mayor to execute the order of vacation.
Thank you, Commissioner Bulley. This is Mayor Nanda.
Commissioner Shipley, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bulley. This is Mayor Nanda, a second by Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. I apologize, there are a lot of votes for one item. So thank you, Commissioner Bulley, for keeping me on my toes. Okay, now we are ready to move on to item C, consider accepting dedications of easements and right-of-way associated with minor subdivision MS 19334 for QuickTrip Store Number 268, a one-lot subdivision located at 2005 West Ninth Street and 910 Iowa Street, submitted by QuickTrip Corp., property owner of record. I will say before we make the motion on this, this is Mayor Nanda still, this will be a big change. I know that intersection has been its wonky way since I moved here 20 years ago and so I think the, the safety improvements will outweigh the nostalgic nature of that, of that intersection. So I'm acknowledging the loss of that while also acknowledging the improved safety.
Mayor Nanda, Stuart Bulley here, City Commission. It goes back a lot further than 20 years and I can attest to that and, and it's with some regret that we're, we're giving up that little item, but I think the safety improvements really will make it better as, as the vice mayor pointed out, so yes, thank you for acknowledging that.
Anything else or do we have a motion? This is Mayor Nanda.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldeich. I move to accept the easements and right-of-ways as shown on the drawing for the minor subdivision for QuickTrip Store Number 0268.
Commissioner Larson, second.
We have a, this is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Finkeldeich, a second by Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldeich?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That item passes unanimously. We did not do public comment on that. Porter, is there anyone present who would have given public comment on that item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Sheri, is that sufficient?
Yeah, yes. We didn't have public comment on any of those items prior to and there isn't a public present.
Okay. So we are ready to move on to agenda item number two, consider awarding bid number B 2012 to Phoenix Concrete LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract in the amount of $326,308.89 for the 21st Street Bicycle Boulevard.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. We're here to, again, to, this week, to talk about the improvements.
Amanda, you cut out.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. We didn't hear anything you said.
Yeah, everybody was, for a minute.
You're, you're in and out. You might want to call in.
Okay, is that easier? Can I still, but I need to share my screen.
Okay, you're okay now. I'll just let you know.
Okay, yeah, please, please let me know. I got two texts just now telling me I froze. They're just a little delayed, but got my phone right here just in case.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll, I'll be able to get through this real quick. All right, so this project is utilizing set aside bicycle funding to create a street that balances the need of all users, with bicyclists, pedestrians, motor vehicles, transit users, as well as the neighborhood. The project vision and goals are aligned with the City of Lawrence Complete Streets policy and through the public engagement and design process, we kind of let the designs of the, the concerns of the neighborhood and the needs of this, the diverse road users guide us and what the design should be. That's why we ended up, you know, we, we didn't really go into this with an idea of what's the budget and let's design to that. We looked at really, truly, what does it need? And need is, is kind of a, a rough word to use there, but what is, what is justified here? And then we knew that we could pare that back if needed, but we wanted to make sure that we were considering all things. So that was kind of how this design process, we went through that. Also shared with us throughout this process that there's no standard bike boulevard. Each community has to develop their own vision and each street calls for a different approach. Some communities just do signage and pavement markings. You know, that didn't seem like the right approach here in Lawrence. Some communities severely restrict vehicles and focus more on pedestrians and bicycles. We saw based on our public engagement, that wasn't the right approach in Lawrence. So this design's unique. It represents what we felt is the right balance for the community and the street. The commission pointed out last meeting, there are people who oppose the project, just as there are people who think it doesn't go far enough. And we feel like this design truly represents a compromise of all viewpoints. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, that the project as bid, when you consider the bid alternates, is virtually the exact same design that was presented as the concept design. There was some refinements made. So at this point, the bid package actually was still the conceptual design that was brought to commission last July. We did remove some items to be bid alternates. Those we are not awarding, that is the diverter at Alabama and there's three speed cushions. Those are the major changes from the conceptual design last July until now for what we're recommending an awarding, plus the, you know, the kind of options that we're going through tonight. But I wanted to let everyone know kind of what had changed throughout this process. So tonight, staff has prepared three options for the commission. These are not by any means the only options, but you know, you could kind of go a lot of different ways with this, but we really came up with what we feel are three decent options for this project. All options are within budget. All options do remove some elements of this design, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's not, that it won't bring value, value to the community and to the neighborhood. So option one was presented by staff last week. That maintains a majority of the design elements and eliminates the rapid flashing beacon. We know that that wasn't really supported by several of the Commissioners. So, so we have looked at option two as something that we feel like meets the needs of what the Commissioners felt like that, that intersection needed and also can keep us within the bounds of what this project was intended and, and maintain that funding. Option three was the option that Commissioners had inquired about, about just building the 21st Louisiana intersection. So I'll go into each option in a little more detail here. Let me share one screen here to help as we talk through this. Okay, so option one constructs all those basement elements, like I said, except for the rapid flashing beacon. Should be noted, none of these options construct to the, the bid alternate items and also all three eliminate that small island on 21st Street just west of Louisiana. Option one can utilize the funding that's in place and can be done this summer. The cost for option one is $329,703.99. Option two is, which is staff's recommendation, eliminates some of the speed reduction elements, but constructs the 21st Louisiana intersection as designed, including the RRFB. I want to just real quick go through these plans. So it would maintain all of the pavement markings, which we feel is important. We wanted to be able to lower the speed limit to 20 miles per hour, which is really a goal for bicycle boulevards. So this really helps us reiterate that is those pavement markings. We would maintain the diverter at 21st and also we think this is critical to some of the complaints we've got from the neighborhood as far as cut-through traffic that cuts all the way from Iowa to Louisiana to the high school and over to Naismith to go to the university. And we think this is kind of a critical piece to be able to address some of those concerns that were brought up by the neighborhood. We would be eliminating the chicane that's at Hillview Road between Ozdale and Naismith. Hopefully, that would not be as big of a deal because we're cutting down some of that cut-through traffic. So we would be able to, you know, this could always be added later, speed cushions could be added later if we still saw issues here, but some of that cut-through traffic being cut down might address some of those issues. through traffic being cut down might address some of those issues. We would still be doing all marking. This is a good improvement for everybody at that intersection, the rate intersection. The people don't stop going across that bridge. We think that all the striping and everything will help reiterate that that's a stop condition as you go across Naismith. Also, it gives the bikes a place to cross, and we're also striping a crosswalk for pedestrians as they cross 21st Street there on the west side of Naismith. The one speed reduction element that we would like to construct is the chicane near Mitchell. This is the area of street where we saw the highest speeds when we did our data collection. And also, we don't have any of these in Lawrence, so this is a good opportunity for us to build one, really see how it works. I think that's going to help us in the future as we do more projects to see, is this something that works? Because, you know, speed cushions and speed humps are not something that everybody likes. There are definitely some people who love them and some people who hate them. So I think it's time that we try some different options here in Lawrence, and this would give us an opportunity to evaluate this option. We would not be constructing the diverter at Alabama that was a bid alternate. We would also not be constructing the chicane that's south of the high school, or this little bit of striping here. We would be constructing the, or installing the pavement markings to narrow the section of Louisiana. That's the one section, or 21st Street, that's the one section of 21st Street that does not have parking on either side, so it's quite wide. So we think it's kind of important to narrow that. Visually, it'll slow people down, even though it's just a visual narrowing. And everything will be constructed at the intersection, except for the small island that's eliminated on all options. We just don't feel it's, it's necessary, given where the design has, has kind of ended. And then we would not be awarding the two speed cushions that are on, between Louisiana and Massachusetts Street. However, we would be doing the pavement markings in that section. That section had lower speeds already when we looked at the, the data that we collected. So that, I'm going to go back up here to the charts. That's a summary of option two. That option, it may require some future phases to calm traffic. We would have to do some data. We'll have to see how the neighborhood responds. With taking out some of those elements, it may require that in the future. We do think it's a good start to the project. We could kind of consider it as a phase one. And we can use the bond funding that's in place. It's within budget, and we can get that completed this summer in coordination with the Melanoverlay at 21st Louisiana. The cost for that option is $326,308.89. Option three was what some of the Commissioners had discussed last week, and that only the improvements at 21st Louisiana, including the rapid flashing beacon. I should say only because when we do that, we also need to do some striping at 19th and Louisiana to accommodate transit, so that they don't have to make that turn onto 21st Street anymore. They can go ahead to the 19th and Louisiana intersection. So we would also be doing that small amount of pavement markings at 19th and Louisiana. This, this option won't address those traffic concerns of the neighborhood as far as the speeding and cut through traffic to the high school. Will also not allow us to evaluate the effectiveness of some of those proposed elements, like some of the diverters and the chicanes that are somewhat unique to Lawrence at this point. And we think that having some data on that will help, help us make more educated, you know, decisions in the future. There's several challenges with this option. If we go with this option three, staff recommends rebidding the project. There is just a large reduction in scope, and it's not something that we would recommend going forward with, with the current bid. This would also force us to likely be a 2021 project, given the timeline of rebidding and all of that. And we wouldn't be able to get this project and a Melanoverlay done over the summer. So we would have to push this. That would mean either next summer damaging some of the Melanoverlay work that was done, or also pushing that scope of work to next summer. One other thing too is, we wouldn't be able to use the bond funding for this in the form it's in now, that we would have to do a new bond resolution. And then the Attorney General would have to approve that reallocation of funds, and that's anticipated to cost about $10,000, and that'll take a little bit of time also. But with the rebidding, I mean, we would have that time. I'm going to stop sharing here. Okay, so I just wanted to reiterate, staff's recommendation is option two. We think it balances the, both the desire of what the commission asked for at the last meeting, also with the concerns of the neighborhood, and it's within budget.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Amanda. Are there any questions for Amanda?
Commissioner Bowley, Amanda, you referred last week to the crash history at 21st and Louisiana. It's my understanding that there are a good number of crashes that are rear end crashes for cars that are northbound, where the car at the intersection is trying to make a left turn and they get rear ended. Is that what you were referring to?
There's both. There's both rear, yes, rear end crashes for people that are trying to make the left turn going west onto Louisiana, where that's kind of a pseudo-turn lane right now. It's really like a, kind of a, it's got striping that, but will use it as a turn lane. It's really, so people do, there tends to be rear end crashes there. There's also crashes where people are trying to go straight through because of that misalignment of 21st Street. So it's kind of a multitude of reasons that that intersection has a higher crash rate.
So doing this work at 21st and Louisiana would improve the safety for automobiles as well as bikes?
Yes, yes, I believe it would. The turn lane isn't very, really long. I think during peak hours, you're still going to get some queuing there that, that happens probably into the through lane. However, at those times when there's one or two cars waiting to turn left, you would be able to fit them probably more like three or four cars. The, but also eliminating that straight through across on 21st Street that doesn't align well will also help that, that intersection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Nanda, are there other questions from Commissioners?
Mayor, Courtney Shipley. I'm glad Commissioner Bowley brought up crash history at that intersection. To me, the, in my experience, anecdotally, the intersection of Naismith and 21st is the most harrowing. Does it have a similar or worse crash history than 21st and Louisiana?
This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. Yes, 21st and Naismith is actually, as far as number of crashes, is actually a higher number. Most of those are people not stopping, or they stop and they go anyway in front of traffic that's, as they're coming across kind of that bridge section. That's why some of that striping there, we think, will, will help just reinforce that that's a stop condition. And I think the narrowing of the street through there with the striping will help everybody stay a little more focused on the road also.
This is Commissioner Bowley. The diverter at 21st and Osdale should help with the volume of the traffic that's crossing Naismith on 21st. Is that correct?
Yes, this is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. Yes, the volume going really both directions, because you won't be able to get through to Iowa going west. So we anticipate most people that are coming out of the high school, they're going to turn onto Naismith one direction or another. And people will not be coming all the way from Iowa across. So you will have much lower volumes coming, going eastbound at that location.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon, I've been, I've Googled it a few times to see what they look like, but is there one in town that, what, what does it look like? Like, do we have another one in town that we use? Now we have a couple different crosswalk types. I was trying to figure out which one this would be.
So this is a, oh, sorry. Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. This would be most like, some of them that we've installed around schools, probably in the last year and a half to, about year and a half, where you push the button. It's really just the school crosswalk sign, but you push the button and there's rapid flashing lights underneath the sign that draw attention to that sign. So there's a couple that are, where I think of them most is right around Quail Run. There, I think, is two right there, and then also there's one as you go southbound on Inverness from Bob Billings. There's one there crossing Inverness. There's several around in different school areas. That's where we've mostly used them, is adjacent to schools. There are newer treatment that was just approved recently in the last couple of years by FHWA.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. I had a question around those as well. I know that it kind of doubled in price from the time that we made an estimate as to the cost of those to now. And I, I know that one, item one has it without the beacon. Item two has it with the beacon despite the significant cost under that budget. But I'm just curious if we weren't to get the beacon now, do you feel like that's a cost that has leveled off, or is going to continue to double over a period of two years?
This is Amanda Sahin, Project Engineering Program Manager. I, I feel like if we had a project where we bid more than one of those, we would likely get better costs. I think part of the challenge is, it's, you know, you're bringing a person in just to do that scope of work. And so if, when you do, when we've done them previously, we did one last summer. We got decent pricing on that, but prior to that, we had done a lot at one time. So we went in and did like a whole Safe Rotz School where we went and did multiple. And I think you're going to get better costs if you were to do those more in bulk. We are going to be putting one in and bidding it this year, so it will be interesting to see with that CIP project at 7th and Tennessee later this year. So this is kind of eye-opening to see the bids on this one. And that, that's kind of, but that project, we also have made the decision to bid that with the 21st and Mass work, which although that's a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is more like a signal, it's a similar scope of work where we're going to be bringing someone in for the bigger project. So they'll be able, we're hoping to do that, that rapid flashing beacon for a cheaper cost. I think the challenge with this one was, it was the only signal work in the entire project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowley, with a question for Amanda. Could we consider doing option two without the rapid beacon and maybe add that into the other bids for the 21st and Mass and 7th and Tennessee?
Sorry, was that for me? It's cutting in and out. Okay. Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. Yeah, I think, I think that's something we could do. We could, we're going through that design right now with Alta, so I believe we could bid that, and we would just reserve some of these funds for that scope of work with that contract. And we may see better pricing. It's really hard to tell right now, but I don't think they'll go up anymore, not significantly.
Mayor Nanda, are there other questions from Commissioners? Like Commissioner Shipley?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. So then in that situation, there would, a way we would get three of them, and that might bring our cost down.
Yes, Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. Yes, we would be bidding then the two rapid flashing beacons along with the pedestrian hybrid beacon. So you'd be getting a pretty large chunk of money that would probably make it more worthwhile for a contractor who does that type of work to come to Lawrence and give us competitive pricing.
And then again, Commissioner Shipley, as I mentioned last time, normally those things would go through the bicycle pedestrian prioritization metric. In this situation, would you recommend that, or would you recommend that be some kind of completely different CIP project that rolls all those things together?
This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. I mean, I, that, that prioritization policy is a guideline. It, it's meant to really help kind of get us the 90% solution. There's going to be these odd things that come up outside of that, that we're going to have to just adapt to. And I think that that's something that, I think it's a valuable project. I think a lot of projects that are on that list are. If that's something, though, the commission feels is one of the priorities, I think it's, makes sense to have that, utilize this, this funding. We also do have, if we choose to do that, kind of going back to last week, the CDBG project with the Knight, with Knight Street, with that grant that we have in place, there is also extra money this year in ped bike funding that, that frees up if we were to move this, that could do that also. So I think there's allotted for ways we could go about it. And I do think it would be a, a good project to do.
Commissioner Larson here. Amanda, I have a few questions for you. The, did I understand you earlier when you said that it's the 21st and Louisiana part of the project was not done this year, that the Melanoverlay that's slated for that intersection could be, could be held off till next year?
Sorry, you're cut. This is Amanda Sahin. You're cutting now, but I, I think I got to just to what you're saying. You're saying the Melanoverlay?
Yeah, the Melanoverlay. I thought you'd said earlier that, that could be put off till next year if we wanted to wait to do the, the 21st and Louisiana intersection along with the beacon.
I, I do think, I mean, we just awarded that project. This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. We just awarded that project, so I think we'd need to make changes if, if we felt that that was the right way to go. But it would just have to be something we would probably want to act on pretty soon, if we wanted to make those changes. Can I bring up one other point as somebody kind of, as we started talking about the risky part of option three? If we went with option two and de-scoped another $60,000 of work, we may be running into some of the concerns that we had with option three with not awarding enough of the project. I'm being reminded here about that. Oh, not awarding enough of the bid to where we're de-scoping too much value out of that contract and may run into some challenges with needing to rebid that. I think when we were looking at reducing it to 330,000 about, we're looking at like a 20% reduction, so we're still maintaining 80% of the, of the project bid.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. So Commissioner Larson here. Amanda, so the original project budget for this was what, 300, was it 331,000?
Yes, Amanda Sahin. Yes, 331 and some change. I'd have to pull up the memo here.
Okay. So I just, I'm just, do you see it as an issue at all, again, Commissioner Larson here, I'm sorry, that the fact that on options one and two, we're stripping away anywhere from a third to over 50% of the project, but we're still at the 325 to $330,000 range on those project costs?
This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. I think the challenge is, we haven't done projects like this. And so, and you know, our engineer did some estimates, and even some of the way that he chose to do things with the full depth curb and such with these bump outs, that's not something that he's typically done. He's typically done dowel on curbs. We didn't feel maintenance wise that that made sense. We're looking at long-term maintenance on these. And so some of the ways that we went about, that we directed them to do it, added significant cost to the project. And I think it was really hard for us to refine what that cost was. We haven't done these before. You know, we took our best shot at it, at, at the estimate. I do think we have three bidders that when you remove a couple of the real outlier bid items, they're very close to each other. So that, that tells me, given the current bid climate and the market here in Lawrence, the cost is, I, I don't think if we bid it in another time or anything, it would necessarily be different.
Commissioner Larson here again. So, you know, I realize this is one of the first ones we've done, or the first one we've done, I'm sorry. But you've, you know, and I can understand not having the experience, but isn't that why we hired Alta to kind of provide us with that experience? And would they have not given us some sort of insight as to the potential costs?
This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. Yeah, that's where I was noting that we, we did things a little bit different. He's, Paul with Alta, obviously, this is a new market to him. He was kind of shocked by some of the costs. However, given that we had three bidders that were very close on a lot of items, that validated some of the, that's kind of the cost here in this market. Also, we, you know, I pointed out, we, we did things a little bit differently, where he's used to doing those dowel on curbs. That's quite a bit cheaper than doing the full depth removal of the pavement where we're doing the, the full curbs. However, we know- However, we know with our snowplows hitting it and things, we don't want to deliver a project that our field crews are having to go out and fix all the time. And so we, we really tried to make the best decision for kind of our community, which may be different than what other communities do. And I think that that threw in some uncertainties with this also.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson here. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Are there any other questions for Amanda? Okay, we do have one individual here for public comment on this item. Chris Tilden, please go ahead.
Thanks. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. I really do appreciate the opportunity. I just want to make one remark related to the technical components of this plan, and that is, I know Amanda essentially said option two was presented as the, kind of the preferred option because of concerns about option one. But I do think that option one retains more of the traffic calming, speed reducing elements of the plan. There are numerous improvements to the 21st Street and Louisiana intersection that I think make that a really safe intersection. So I think the idea of selecting option one with the possibility of adding the rapid flashing beacon at a later point makes a lot of sense. I wanted to speak maybe more to kind of public input because I know there's a perception of a lot of negative input, but I do want to point out that 21st is one of the priority projects in the bike plan that has been approved by the commission. There were 600 people that participated in phase one, public input during the development of the bike plan, over 400 that participated in the second stage. That was then approved by the technical advisory committee, was proper for the MPO Policy Council with additional opportunity for public input. That was approved. So 21st is part of a plan that had thousands of voices as part of that process suggesting that that was an important element. You know, as we moved forward into implementation, there's extensive public comment as, as the plan was developed. It was approved by the Multimodal Transportation Commission, the city commission in July. The budget was approved in December. So I really think it's safe to say we've had, you know, thousands of folks that at this point in time have weighed in for a project that, you know, with option one and option two coming in under budget, I think make a lot of sense to pursue. You know, I know it's still with COVID and everything else, uncertainty about budget. You know, the Wacarosa and Harvard intersection project that you all referred to earlier in the consent agenda, that was a $2.5 million project to renovate an intersection. This is a 1.3 mile project for under 400,000 that I think will really improve connectivity for people who are on bikes, but also improve safety for people in the neighborhood and people in the community using the roadway. So I would recommend approval. Again, I like option one. Alta is really the preeminent agency in the country doing work on these kinds of projects. And I believe and am confident that we've put together a project that will really benefit our community.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Chris, for that comment. And now we will bring this back to the commission. So the item before us tonight is to consider awarding bid B 2012 to Phoenix Concrete LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract in the amount of $326,308.89 for the 21st Street Bicycle Boulevard. We were presented with three options and the recommendation from staff is option two, which is the price point that's mentioned in the consideration. Are there any conversation that the commission wants to have about these items?
Commissioner Larson here. I have really strong concerns about just the, where we're at with the project as far as all the elements that it seems as though we've had to eliminate in order to get it to where it's under budget. I wonder if it's to the point to where it's so watered down that we should take a second look at the entire project and just reevaluate what we can do with it, how we can move forward with it. So, you know, that's one of my biggest concerns in, in the fact that, you know, we've got some potential options with the 21st and Louisiana intersection that could potentially be implemented. But I'm very concerned about moving forward with this under the situation. You look at option one and we've eliminated a third of the, of the treatment criteria and option two, over 50% of it just to get under that budget. And I also wonder, under the current economic situation that we're in right now, as we go forward, we, is there an opportunity there for us to get better bidding because of the economic situation that's coming forward in the next six to eight months? So I'm hesitant about moving forward with any of these. However, I'm open to, open to listening to other commissioners' ideas. Commissioner Larson, one more thing. It's not, and I don't want to totally get rid of this project. I do think it's something that may be to table for a different time. I strongly believe in us moving forward with something at some point, but I don't know if now is the right time to do that.
Mayor Commissioner Shipley, I don't know if you'll allow this, but I did maybe have a little clarification for the only commenter. And maybe Amanda can answer it and that won't violate your rules, but you mentioned the priority project for the bike plan, which maybe I don't know as much about, but it seems to me like it's more than a two-year. It's been around for quite a while. It's been a prioritization plan for some time.
This is Mayor Nanda. If Chris, Chris can answer that question for you. He is welcome to do that.
Courtney, I don't know if you want me to answer. I'll, I, I do know that it is part of the bike plan that is also considered part of the transportation plan, but I don't know if Amanda can speak to the, kind of the, the...
Can you say your name, please?
Yeah, this is Chris Tilden with resident. And all I can speak to is that I know that when the Lawrence Bikes Plan was approved and is part of our long-term transportation plan, which then is wrapped into our comprehensive plan, that the 21st Street corridor is part of what's considered the priority network. And so it, you know, and that's gone through multiple phases of public comment and, and approval. Amanda may have other insight into kind of how it fits into that process.
This is Amanda Sahin, engineering program manager. If I went back in my brain two years, I would probably know the exact dates that these were added, but there's so much that's happened on this project that I've forgotten. I do know it's been on the, as a planned route on the bike plan for, for a long time. This current bike plan that, that was just passed this last year, it is a priority route. Really, I believe when those priority networks were developed, it was the Ped Bike Issues Task Force that started that process. And so I believe this last bike plan, it took that Ped Bike Issues Task Force priority routes and incorporated that into the actual bike plan. And so I think that for the most part, I would say this priority route originated in the Ped Bike Issues Task Force, which specifically called this, this street out and this segment out as a bicycle boulevard.
This is Mayor Nanda. I don't know that, I believe anything is ever going to get cheaper regardless of the state of things. And I do know that we have these funds set aside that are specifically for this project, which we lose and we lose $10,000 if we walk away from it. I do appreciate the option of having, excuse me, of kind of proposing this as a phased project. So we're not saying this is it. I know that we grossly underestimated how much this would be for a multitude of reasons, none of which I think are nefarious in nature. I think that it's a lack of experience coming to the table on these issues. And this is our first crack at something like this. I think, as I mentioned last week, marketing, and I hate using that term on something like this, but just the very term that we use to describe this project tends to be polarizing for folks. But when we talk about this calming our streets, this is what our community wants. We have a multitude of requests for traffic calming in our community and we revamped that program. I think that this, being our first crack, it is really prime for being revamped as well. That said, I'm not willing to just walk away from it, throw out my hands and walk away from it. I would be delighted to engage in option one or option two, knowing that the beacon is not going to increase in price significantly. And perhaps even in the future, we could bulk purchase that with another and experience a reduced cost. I wonder if item one would provide more of what we were looking for at a cost that's locked in for now, that won't necessarily experience those increases in the future. But I'm curious as to other commissioners' thoughts on that.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I agree with you and I believe I said that last week that I thought that option one was a good compromise that I think ultimately would deliver us what we wanted. And, you know, I also want to say, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation at all had it not come in over budget. So had it come in closer to budget, it would have sailed through and no one would be questioning whether we should go forward with it or not. So if we find a compromise that keeps us from going over budget, then I feel uncomfortable throwing out years of public discourse, years of planning, quite a bit of money in planning. And I think I'd really rather see us go forward, again, within budget. So I agree that, like you said, the economy of two or three beacons would still deliver us what we wanted. Then I also want to remind us that the priority here is safety of neighborhoods. And while I am fully aware that people even within the neighborhood may have questions about whether these calming devices will or won't do what we want them to do, I think we need to continue moving forward with projects that answer to our desire to be bikeable, answer to our desire to be walkable, and what I have understood in the past to be a desire to reduce driving by making things more accessible without cars. And I think this is an incredible first try. And I did appreciate, I hadn't thought of this, putting that number in perspective compared to some of the other traffic calming things that we've done. I think Chris Tilden mentioned the roundabouts at Wacarosa. I really hadn't thought about what a huge number that, that those projects were compared to this one. So again, I, if we just don't go over budget and we can find that compromise, and I agree, option number one is where I feel most comfortable, then we would be getting everything that we started out trying to get.
This is Mayor Nanda. Other commissioners have comments?
This is Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Yeah, I'm struggling a little bit. I was hoping Stuart would start talking before I did, but I couldn't handle the silence. But, you know, I'm struggling a bit on where to go with this. I think Commissioner Shipley made a good point that if it hadn't come in over budget, given all the years of work on this and, and the money dedicated to it and where we were at, I probably would have voted for it on the consent agenda and, you know, moved on. And, but, you know, obviously a lot of work went into this, you know, before I got on the commission. We certainly got a lot of pushback on, on spending this money now, but, you know, obviously we know that this money is dedicated to, to bike and pedestrian type activities. It's not like we can use it for anything we want. But, you know, all that being said, I guess, if, if we're going to, if we're going to proceed with it, I would lean towards option one as well. I think if you're going to do it, you might as well get as many of the elements as you can. And then if you decide that the other improvements at 21st and Louisiana aren't working and we still need a, you know, an RFPB, a pedestrian crossing, you know, flashing light, you could add that later. I'm not sure with the islands and everything else going on there, that the flashing light would be a market improvement in, in, in safety, given the narrowness of that road. It seems to me that some of the wider roads, that becomes a little bit more useful. But anyway, if it does, I think you could add that later. I mean, I think if you're going to do it, I would probably lean towards option one as well. Let's see, let's see how this works and let's see how it works in more and see how these different calming devices work and proceed that way is probably the way I'd lean.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I would like to thank staff for the work they've done over the last week to provide us with, with options on this. I recognize, as did the vice mayor, that this is dedicated funding for bike ped projects. And I'd like to express the hope that this will increase the safety of the automobile traffic as well because of the crashes at 21st and Naismith and 21st and Louisiana. But I'd also like to acknowledge that a lot of the comment that we got that was negative about this project referred to the state, the, the condition of our city streets. And frankly, these people had some good points. Our city streets are in bad shape. We need to devote significant resources to remedying the infrastructure problems that we have. And so as we do this project, I think it's very important for us to also keep in mind that there are significant improvements to basic roadway that need to be done and that that's our responsibility as well. So I'm certainly willing to support option one if that's the will of the commission. And thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Commissioner Bowley and all the other commissioners for your comments, Vice Mayor. Is there anything else before we hear a motion?
Yes, this is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Amanda, can you tell us again why you recommended option two? You recommended option one last week, you recommended option two. Was that more because of the way we discussed it last week or is there something I'm, something that changed in, in staff's perception of the two projects? I just want to make sure I'm not underselling the, the flashing beacon, for example.
This is Amanda Sahin, engineering program manager. Yes, staff still believes option one really maintains the, really the most, the most important elements of the project. We think the rapid flashing beacon can be installed fairly simply later. I mean, it, it does not tear up the road. It's a pretty quick project to do. So I think it's something that could be added on later with, when we, you know, go and do these across town, maybe in more locations, and maybe we'd even get better pricing then. Really, the option two recommendation was taking into account city commission's concerns and saying that they really wanted to see that 21st and Louisiana intersection constructed as designed. That's why we were recommending option two. If now, you know, with, through talking through all this, we, we still believe option one is a great option. We just wanted to remind you, if we do go that route, the motion's tiny bit different because that dollar amounts about $3,000 different. So we just got to make sure that that's taken care of.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai again. Again, about the flashing beacon, again, I mean, I don't know what, what do the engineering studies say about how much safer that makes the intersection or what about the original study said we really needed one of those there? And what, how does that impact safety and to what extent, if you can say, if we pull it out?
This is Amanda Sahin, engineering program manager. I think that location already had a island. We were relocating it further south to make it a little more visible to turning traffic, which I think will help. traffic, which I think will help. We haven't had in history there of pedestrians being, being hit. So, I do not think it's necessarily, like, I don't think it's a location that's screening for a rapid flashing beacon necessarily. I do think there's probably places in town that if I was looking across the board, I would say put them in other places first. But with us doing the work here, obviously, I think it's a great improvement at the intersection. As far as though how much safer, that's really hard to say. I think with that island there, there's a huge benefit to pedestrians and bicyclists, that you really only have to look at one direction of traffic. Then you have a place you can get to the middle, you can stop, and you can focus on the other direction of traffic, which really helps crossing improvements. So, we have locations that don't have that island that can probably benefit more from that rapid flashing beacon.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor Finkeldie again. And final question then would be, we've said this a couple of times, but I just want to be clear before I vote. If we, this money is dedicated to bike- ped projects, right? If we decide not to proceed it and said, please go resurface, you know, castles or something, could we redirect the money that way, or is this dedicated money?
This is Amanda Sahin, Engineering Program Manager. That might be a better question for Jeremy, but I, I believe it's in, it's currently the way it's budgeted in the CIP is for bike- ped projects. So, I'm sure that there could be some amendments done to the CIP and stuff like that. If you want more info, I'm sure Jeremy could probably go into much more detail than I can.
This is Jeremy, excuse me. As the staff report indicated, we really think that option one and two keeps us within the current language of the, of the bond resolution. Any deviation beyond what's in option one or two, I think we're going to have to go through that process that we identified with the Attorney General.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd like to express my gratitude for the information about the cost of the rapid flashing beacon, and how we might be able to get a better price on it if we got more together. I think that's a significant factor that leads me to think that the first option is, is the better one at this point.
Does someone want to, this is Mayor Nanda, does someone want to make a motion? Noting that the amount, if we chose item one, would not be the 326,000, but would be the 329,000.
Mayor, I'll do it. I have never done it before, so this will be exciting. Okay. I move, sorry, Courtney Shipley, Commissioner. All right, doing so good. Consider awarding bid number B2012 to Phoenix Concrete LLC, authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract in the amount of 3,000, 329,000, or the 21st Street Bicycle Boulevard. Going to do it?
Do we need that exact dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Shipley, can you read the exact dollar amount from the?
And, and the motion is to award the bid.
Did I not say that?
You said consider.
Oh, okay. I don't have the exact amount here. I have the 329, what's the exact amount?
32, this is Amanda Sahin, 329, 703.99.
99. Okay. Can I try again, Mayor?
Please.
Commissioner Shipley, award bid number B2012 to Phoenix Concrete LLC, authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract in the amount of 329,703.99, or the 21st Street Bicycle Boulevard.
This is Commissioner Stewart Bowley, I second.
This is Mayor Nanda. Sheri, is that sufficient for the motion?
Amanda, do you want them, sorry, Sheri Redeman, City Clerk, to acknowledge that they're going with option one, or is just the word amount? Are you comfortable with that?
This is Amanda Sahin. I'm comfortable with it. I know what the intent is, and it matches the amount for option two, if you're comfortable with it, Sheri.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
We have a motion from, this is Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Shipley, a second by Commissioner Bowley, and?
May I clarify, please? Stewart Bowley here, Commissioner. This is the option one. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will now go through roll call on the vote on that. My dog is trying to eat all the pillows in my living room. I apologize. Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Um, aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Nay.
Mayor Nanda, aye. This item passes four to one, with Commissioner Larson voting against. Okay, so our next item, thank you all for your presentations on that, and thanks for kind of moving us through that conversation. I know it's been in the works for a couple of years. So, I really appreciate it. Our next item is commission items. Do we, do any commissioners have future agenda items to add? Any future work session items to add? Other items?
Commissioner Bowley, I would like to report that I was contacted by a constituent this week with a request that we consider signage for pedestrians at 19th Street, by the fire station there on the north side of 19th Street. The sidewalk goes up 19th Street to the west, and then it turns to the north and goes north on Iowa. There's no crosswalk across Iowa, but I don't think there's any information for the pedestrians that says you need to take the tunnel, which is a sidewalk that goes further south, and then goes through the tunnels. So, I think what happens is people may be getting to the top of the hill there at 19th and Iowa, and they want to cross Iowa, and so, there's no crosswalk, and they may be putting themselves at great risk in that intersection. So, I'd just like to bring that up for the people to consider. And as I say, I'm reporting this, it's the concern of a constituent. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Commissioner Bowley. Do any commissioners want to weigh in on that item, or staff?
This is City Manager Craig Owens. We'll definitely take a look at that and try and improve the, make sure that's clear where people are supposed to go. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. I, again, want to thank the community for everything that they've been doing over the past month and a half now, nearly two months, especially our unified command, our frontline workers, our first responders, all of the staff providing food for folks, staying safe, folks sewing masks, folks just providing for their neighbors. I think that it's really wonderful to see this community coming together in the midst of something so awful. And we have done a really good job here in Douglas County. So, I just, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that.
Anything else from commissioners? Okay, we will move on to our city managers' report.
Thank you. We've provided Craig Owens, City Manager. We have provided a number of updates to you, regular reports throughout here. I'll draw your attention to the homeless point in time count findings. Also, the remote virtual inspections, I think that's been an innovation that is the type of thing that's going on in our organization, and that we're, we're capturing, and that may, may well be the type of program that we'll be able to continue in, in the, in the future, in, in healthier times. And happy to answer any questions that you may have on city manager report items.
Mayor Nanda, are there any questions for City Manager Craig Owens? Thank you, Craig. Our next item is the calendar. Again, I would say this is looking pretty slim at the moment, but I think that we are preparing to move into a transition period potentially. I wanted to mention that I'm guessing that city commission meetings will remain virtual, at least for the first few meetings in May. Are there any, any thoughts on that?
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your work in doing these Zoom meetings. I am very impressed with your dedication and, and how well you do. So, thank you for your efforts. I am content to continue this as we need to, to keep the community safe.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. One, I'd say the same thing. Great job to all the staff and the mayor for keeping these running so well. And I certainly think it'll be a while before, even after they lift the stay-at-home order, I'm confident there'll be a, no more than 10 people in the room situation. And just when we get us and staff together, we break that 10, 10-person rule pretty quick. So, I do think I could certainly see probably at least the May meetings being this way before they even start to look at allowing more than 10 people in a room.
Commissioner Larson here, and I would echo that, that I do think we need to be cautious going forward as to when we determine that we can start meeting in person again. I am all in favor of continuing as we are for the immediate first, future.
This is Mayor Nanda. So, I guess then we will plan for at least the first two May meetings, to have those virtually, and then we can kind of reassess at that point. I think that's helpful information for the public to be aware of, just so that we can plan ahead. Certainly for me, for childcare, and others, and, and hopefully my dog will be a little more sleepy the next time that we meet. But I appreciate it, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to keep our community safe. So, thanks.
Mayor, this is Tony Wheeler, City Attorney. Could I speak for just a moment?
Please.
The opportunity to have these virtual meetings are by virtue of some special regulations that the Attorney General has passed that makes sure that we're still in compliance with COMO, but addresses the pandemic situation that we're in. The regulations are pretty clear that this is available to us so long as there are orders in place that make it more complicated for us to have our regular meetings. So, it is not really a choice for the commission. We will have to review what orders are in place, either by the state or the county, to determine whether this is still an option.
This is Mayor?
Clarification.
Thank you, Tony. So, we aren't really necessarily able to say we would do the first two commission meetings in May virtually, because those orders are set to expire on May 3rd, until we get further orders. Is that my understanding?
That is my understanding, yes. So, the governor could lift the stay-at-home order, or modify the order. Our county health department could also, an order, could put an order in place that would allow us to continue. But absent those sort of restrictions by one of those entities, we couldn't hold this type of meeting.
This is Mayor Nanda. So, we, may we proceed saying, if it is an option, we would continue in this manner for the foreseeable future?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
This is City Manager Craig Owens. I believe we passed a resolution adopting these procedures, and we had a, we had a date that that authorization expired as well. So, I don't remember what that date was, but it may not include May.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. And those run concurrent with any orders, either by the county or by the governor. We didn't set a specific date. They're just linked to those orders.
This is City Manager Craig Owens. I'd also suggest that I think the, even when orders come down, there will be, there will be a slower tempering of retraction of some of the orders, and congregation of, of more than 10 people is likely to be one of those things that stays in place in the initial stages. I don't know that for sure, but I would expect that's, that's probably true. So, gathering more than 10 of us, which, again, happens as soon as we open a meeting, probably is likely to be in place longer.
This is Mayor Nanda. So, we will continue in this way as long as, as it is legal and reasonable to do so. And short of anything significantly changing, we will plan, at the very least, to have the first meeting in May virtually, unless there are orders to the contrary. Thank you for those clarifications. I appreciate it. I think it's a conversation that we needed to have, and I think it's helpful for the public as well. Are there any other calendar items that commissioners would like to discuss?
No.
Okay. Well, then, we are on to item J. Do we have a motion?
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, mutual turn.
Commissioner Larson, second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldie, second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. Thank you so much. We are adjourned. See you in May.
Thank you.
Thank you.